So I would, I don't, as an alternate then, I don't know if I necessarily need to vote today.
Yes, you do, because we, yeah, because we have five. Oh, now Jerry's on. So if you want to pretend an alternate, you can do that, right? So then the voting people would be Jerry, Brad, Leslie, John, and me. If you're the alternate, right? Or do we have another one of the alternates here? I forget.
Brad is also.
Brad, you're an alternate as well.
You're also on mute.
Oh, no, he's not on mute, but we still can't hear you, Brad.
Thank you, dear.
Stop swearing at us, Brad.
No. I don't know, it says you're, you're unmuted, but your audio doesn't seem to be working. Maybe even re-drive? That would be the easiest way. So Paul, that's, I guess, up to you on who you want to be.
I, I think the two alternates ought to flip for it. You know, Paige or.
You have to, to say, um, but maybe if Brad's audio issue doesn't get resolved, that may.
Yeah.
Solve the problem.
Actually, I was thinking Paige, you could run the meeting tonight, and I could just sit back and watch.
Come on, Paul, you're back from vacation mode.
Yeah, that's the hard thing, getting back in the saddle.
I know that feeling.
So, I don't know, oh, there he is, he's back, connecting to an audio, he says. Now he's, now he's muted.
Suspense.
Oh, Jerry's muted too, and saying something.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we never had this much excited excitement when we have live meetings.
Yeah. All right. So we don't know what's happening with Brad, so I, I guess we'll nominate Brad to be the alternate. How does that work? Everybody cool with that? So let's call this meeting to order. This is the, uh, Maynard Zoning Board of Appeals meeting. It's Monday, November fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. It's seven oh three P M., and we're meeting via Zoom. The first item on our agenda is approval of minutes, which we can't find, and if we could find them, we can't, we can't hear them, or can't read them, excuse me. Um, so Brad, are you, uh, in audio now? Can we hear you? No, can't hear you?
No.
No. So we, we've nominated you to be the, the alternate tonight. If you can hear us, which is great, you, you can then give us thumb up or thumb down, however we go with our meeting. How's that? Um, so we have a public hearing, and I will read the announcement here. It's a variance application filed by Susan Hopper, Five Paul Road, Maynard. The subject property Five Paul Road is a confirming lot within the single-family residence zoning district one. The petitioner is requesting relief from the Maynard zoning bylaws to allow construction of a back deck that would encroach ten point six feet into the required thirty-foot rear setback. I've, I've looked through the, the documents briefly, but I would like to hear from the petitioner. Who is the petitioner? It must be you, Susan.
Yes.
So could you explain your case, what you want?
Yes. Thanks for letting me request it. Um, so I live at Five Paul Road, and what I'm requesting is, I would like to build a deck off the back of my house, and which would encroach on the thirty-foot setback by ten point six feet. And I have, there's an unbuildable lot behind my house. I currently have a deck to this right side of my house, but, um, it's not very private, because people walk on my property to access the trails that are behind my house. And so I would like to build the deck off the back, so it's more private. There are three houses on, on Paul Road that, um, back the conservation land that have decks off the back of their houses. So by granting this request, I feel like, um, you know, my house is, uh, you know, like the neighbors. And right now, it's not, um, so that's my request.
Have you looked at those neighbor lots to see how far back their decks extend into this thirty-foot zone, or don't you know?
Um, I don't know first, but all, it looks like all the lots are the same size on Paul Road. Um, and the decks are off the back, you know, maybe ten feet. But I, I can't say for sure.
Okay.
Um, the foot traffic on my property has increased, because they built a house on Dana Road, um, eighteen Dana Road, that people used to use as a way to access the trails. And now people can't access the trails, um, using that lot. So, um, that's happened over the last seven months with the building of that property.
Paul, can I make a point of clarification?
Sure.
So, um, Susan's lot, um, on one side is private property, and on the other side, it abuts conservation land. Um, so the area that she's talking about, uh, there is a path that is conservation land, um, that it, there is no, like, marker of where that property line is. Um, so there, you know, conservation does own a, a slice, um, right next to the property.
And next, and next to her property.
Correct, yeah. So they, they own the, or they, me, we, whatever hat I'm wearing right now, um, own, uh, the, the Silver Hill, uh, rock formation, that's right there. And then it comes down, like swoops down, and there is, um, some lawn that Susan currently mows, um, which is fine. Um, but it, it's, there's no, like, mark, demarcation of where exactly conservation land begins and where her property ends.
So it sounds like, however this case resolves, the conservation department has to put up a marker of some sort.
So there is a marking of, of where this conservation trail is. Um, it's not in conservation's, um, purview, or, you know, we, we have no plans in conservation to put up a fence, um, and.
I don't mean a fence, but just, just something to control, let's call it trespassing across Susan's land.
Yep, so that would be on, on her, on, you know, if, as a private property owner, if she would like to put up a fence on that side, um, she is a very cute too, but.
I, I wasn't thinking a fence, I was just thinking, you know, trail is here kind of thing. That's just a crazy thought of mine. Now Brad had this.
And, and Susan, you can obviously speak for yourself, but she wasn't too, um, Brad, you are unmuted. Uh, you are not muted. Um, sorry, Susan wasn't too fond of, of putting anything on that area, like putting up a, you know, little fence or any sort of, like, markers that say, kind of, this is where the property ends, just 'cause it might not look very nice, um.
I, I don't mind people walking on my property to access the trails.
Oh, okay, 'cause the way you said that, I thought maybe you were concerned about that.
No, no. No, I just want more privacy on my deck.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that, that being the, the point here, and the question here in front of us, um, is there anybody that wants to speak in favor of this petition? And I'm looking at you, Jane, because you're the only non-board member here. Uh, you're on mute. You're on mute. Got it, there you go.
Can you hear me?
Now we can hear you, yeah.
Yay! Okay, so yes, I am at Three Paul Road, and yes, I do have a deck in the back. Um, when I moved in here, the deck was already there. Um, and I have a, a set of stairs that go up to the deck. Okay, um, and then beyond the deck is my yard, which is flat. And then as, as I ascend up Silver Hill, I have about twenty-five feet of my land, of my property, and then beyond that is conservation land. So the setup is a little different. Um, there is a, a very clearly marked trail, um, on the left, on, on your side, and, and, and there's also a conservation sign that unfortunately, um, um, bushes or whatever have grown up around it, so you really can't see it. People who go up the hill, um, grownups with dogs and people who, you know, versus the children who are on bicycles, don't really notice it, but there is a conservation sign that says, you know, no dumping, and, you know, various rules and regulations, so, but, and right now, it's obscured. Um, so that's, uh, that's one thing to think about, that there already is a sign.
Okay.
So.
Are you in favor or opposition of the petitioner's request?
Right now, I'm in opposition, because of the Dana Street construction that has been going on for seven months. And I, I actually am here because of, I'm really concerned about noise ordinance, which I think is way, way inappropriate and out of control in this area.
And, and how does that impact her interest in having a deck?
Well, if she's going to put a new, if she's going to put in additional construction, and Dana Road development has not finished, we have two construction projects going on at the same time. Okay, so there's definitely a noise issue. Um, the reason I bring it up is because on Dana, we have a lot of noise, um, from paving, for example. Um, and that's why I'm basically opposed to it, because I don't know when it's gonna start, and I don't know when it's gonna end. Um, and I don't know how loud it's gonna be, and I'm concerned about the, um, um, tradesman's traffic, blocking, um, that little narrow ninety-degree angle, especially on both sides. I mean, we have, you know, a lot, a lot of street traffic, walkings, we have, you know, carriages and schoolchildren, and people walking dogs all eve, all during the day, and all, right now, through the dark. So these are some safety issues I'm very, very concerned about. Um, and, so that's, so I would say no.
All right, well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, board members, do you have any questions of Susan? Zoom says the host has control, and the host says, sorry.
No. Um, I, I can try to not, I, I, everyone else can unmute, um, I have that on, let me try.
Yeah.
I can hear you.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I'm wondering, um, Susan, whether, are you planning on taking down the existing deck or connecting it? Because I didn't see a, a, a back door.
Yeah, so the deck, they're not be connected. Um, and the construction will take two weeks, the contractor said.
Yeah.
And it shouldn't be, you know, it's a deck, so, um, we're not, I'm not building a room, or, um.
So I noticed that you have a high, like, you have, um, kind of a high foundation, right? So this is going to be kind of a fairly elevated deck.
Correct, correct. I, I live on a hill.
Yeah.
Enter my house on the first floor, but the first floor is, it's elevated in the back.
Yeah, and then, um, how close are you to your neighbors?
Um, towards, to the side of my house?
Yeah.
Well, the deck wouldn't be on the side, but.
No, I'm just trying to picture it.
I don't know, um, I don't know, fifteen feet, twenty feet, I don't, I can look at the drawings, I'm not sure. They just, they just built it, uh, um, uh, enclosed porch, coming towards my property.
So, Susan, um, to answer that, just, I'm doing like some rough measurements right now, to, since there's no one on one side, um, directly, the three Paul is kind of kitty-corner. Um, but I think it's seven Paul is the next house to you, and from house to house, it's about fifty-three feet.
Okay, so that's pretty good. I wish I had that much. Um, I mean, I, I understand Jane's issue, but, but this is a very temporary noise uh, issue, and the other noise issue with the construction, that's, that's something else altogether, and I don't see the relevance to this case myself. Um, well, that's mostly what I have to say about it.
Okay, I mean, that's valid.
Paige, John, Jerry?
I think it is relevant.
Okay, well, you, you've expressed your concern, we appreciate that. John, do you have anything to comment, ask questions on, or?
Just that I'm one of the folks that have been up to Lookout Mountain, up in that Silver Hill area, and you do, but you're up there on the rocks, you can see down in everybody's yard, like, you see people out walking up and down. Uh, it would look nice, I think, seeing a, it's nicer probably in the, in the summer than it is in the fall with all the dead trees, but.
Yeah.
Paige, Jerry, any comments or questions?
Yeah, I, I agree with Leslie in that, uh, I, I don't, I mean, this is a deck, to the point that there's not a room being constructed, uh, start to finish, it's two weeks. You know, could be even a little less than that. I don't see that as a noise issue. I, I do understand where Jane is coming from with the other noise, but, uh, to your points, that's a separate issue.
Well, go ahead, Jerry, go ahead, finish, because I had one point.
Yeah, it's, uh, I, I would, you know, from what I'm listening to and watching, or what I've reviewed, I think the deck is a good option. I think, uh, her home is far enough away from the, uh, her, her adjacent, the adjacent home. Uh, I think two-week construction time is certainly, you know, rather will be short. That's it, that, I'm, I'm in agreement, I think it's a good idea. Go ahead, Jane.
Okay, no, my concern was noise, and my concern was walking traffic, and my third concern is there are no sidewalks. Okay, so anybody, any Amazon truck, any car, any people with carriages, people that are walking their dogs, all of those people would also have to be extra careful at the particular time. It's a very tough place. It's a very narrow place. Um, and the noise, yeah, so there's a couple things.
There's a, there's a driveway, isn't there? On, uh, your property, Susan?
Yeah, I can fit three cars, so I could, you know, I go to work during the day, so my driveway is usually empty, but I could make sure that the construction people parked in my driveway, if that helps.
Yeah, I think, I think it would.
I think, I think it would really help. You know, and the other, well, obviously, everyone knows that, you know, we are, we are married to our Amazon online ordering, and the Amazon truck is here almost every day. And that's a big truck.
Yeah, well, if the cars, if the, if the construction vehicles are in the driveway.
That would be super.
Yeah, okay. Paige, any questions, comments?
Yeah, I, I agree, I think, with a lot of it, Lisa, in terms of the short construction duration, I think the condition about having the construction vehicles in the driveway is also great, and makes sense. I just, and I'm not opposed to this, but I just wanted to clarify the variance, the criteria we need to consider when granting a variance. The first criteria in the staff report, but, um, notes we have to find owing to circumstances relating to soil condition, shape, or topography. Just wanted to flush that out a little bit, and I was wondering if the applicant could address that, that component for us. Specifically about what conditions at the site, either soil condition, shape, or topography, um, exist that are causing this condition.
Um, I think my back, I, I'm not exactly sure what you're asking. I mean, my back, I live on a hill, so there's slight, um, um, there's slight kind of incline on my backyard. Um, in the conservation, Julia said I had to put up, um, barriers during construction to help, to prevent, like, any kind of runoff, um, that I can definitely do. Um, not exactly sure. Um.
So.
That you, the fact that you back up to conservation land in to, doesn't this back property back up to? No, it's an access to it? Why is it considered unbuildable?
So it's a very interesting backlog. Um, first, I'll just quickly, from the, the, um, impact to topography. Um, so there is a decline that the land slightly declines, then it flattens out, and it's pretty flat lawn, um, until you reach the abutting property, which then turns to woods, and then there's a wooded swamp, um, kind of back there. So, uh, that's why this property is, and it's an unbuildable lot, it's privately owned right now. Actually, in the process of trying to acquire it for the town, which is a whole nother, um, when, when Susan started this process of looking at trying to build her deck, I started the process of looking at trying to acquire the property behind there, um, for conservation use. Um, but, uh, lawyers and legal, and it takes, you know, a long time to do that, so, um, it's unbuildable because it doesn't have, uh, there's no way of, of getting there without going through private property. Um, and it's also almost ninety percent wetlands, um, so there's no, there's no way you could even build anything there without, uh, filling. So, um, that's why Rick determined that that was a, it's an unbuildable lot.
So the fact that there's a, a path there, um, that the reason there's a path there is because of the special properties of the land where the, I've never been hiking there, but, but, I mean, that is.
I see what you're saying.
That she doesn't want the deck on the side of the house is because people use her side, you know, walk along the side of her property to access this land, which is some special topography.
Yeah, so in the back of the property, there is this, there is a secondary trail. Um, it does go through private property, and then it actually connect, there's conservation land on both sides, and so I'm trying to get at it, because
Yeah.
right now, technically, I, I'm not allowed to advertise that you can walk on this property that's just in the middle of an island. Um, but in it, the difference is that the back trail, there is, there is woods between, you know, it, it, not so much at this time of year, um, but, you know, in the summer, there is a bit of privacy between that trail and her, you know, proposed deck. Whereas on the side, there is, it's just lawn, so there's no, from the trail to her property, it's all one, there's nothing like any, um, vegetation, um, bordering, and then, um, based on, like, my quick estimations, and I think, Susan, I forget if we did wetland flags, I required you, I don't think I required you to do wetland flags. It was, it was more than, it was like at ninety feet or almost a hundred feet, so she was right on the border of whether or not she needed to get a permit, a, uh, conservation permit. Um, in the case of variances, we have them go through Z B A before going through the process of getting a wetland permit, just in case you guys said no, then, then we would, um, proceed with the wetlands permitting, so she still has to go through that. Um, it's most likely going to be administrative approval, though, just because she's far enough away from, um, the areas that I'm concerned with.
Mm-hmm.
Having been up there, that, yeah, there are a lot of wetlands, but it's also one big mountain of rock is up there too, so you would have to blast if you want to build anything up there, and I don't.
On that side, it's, yeah.
I don't think you could blast anywhere near there, with all the houses so close.
Yeah, so that one's conservation, um, and, and that's on the side of her property, and then the back of her property is the wild, so, hence the big hill.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Susan, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, just real interestingly, I mean, how, what, what's the volume of folks that go through to, to the trails, like, on a weekly basis? What would you, what would, how many people? I mean, I know you're work, and I know you're busy and, and all of that, but.
So I'm mostly home on the weekends.
Right.
There's traffic every day that I see it, but I, I'm during, I'm not so, during the work, working day, I'm not so.
Right, right. Okay.
And, and people don't want to walk up the big mountain. That's why I think they access it through my property, because it's.
They don't like walking up that trail. I agree. It's children who like go and taking their bikes and going up there, and I've noticed that a lot.
And I'm happy, I'm happy people want to use the trail, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Not a problem people walking on my property to get to the trail. I'm.
Right.
Um, so I'm just looking for, just to have a deck that's more private.
All right.
Okay.
So any, oh, we were, we were asking Susan about the criteria, and the specific criteria that we need to find, if I can read it here, is that the permit granting authority would need to find that owing to circumstances relating to the soil, the shape or topography of the land, or structures, or especially affecting such land or structures, but not generally affecting the zoning district where it is located. And that, that's one item. Another item is that a literal enforcement of the bylaws would involve hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner. And the third one is that a desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, and without nullifying or degradating the intent of the bylaws. So the, the big thing here is what's unique about the property, either the, the soil condition, shape, topography of the land or the structures, but not affecting the zoning district in general. And that's, that's one we need to come up with an answer to show that we gave it due diligence. And then the next one is a literal enforcement would involve hardship, financial or otherwise. And I, I think you've answered that one with your privacy issue. And so we're, and, and then putting a deck when everybody else has a deck, I don't see that as being a problem either. It's the first one owing to the circumstances of, of the, of the property and the area. And so that's where we need to come up with something to say that, uh, aha, we need to get, grant this permit because it's peculiar to this particular property, excuse me. So if you could shed any light on that, that would be very good.
I don't know. Could it be that, that my property, you know, that there's an unbuildable lot behind me? Um.
Well, if you, if you take it the other way and say there is a buildable lot, then you're getting awful close to your backyard neighbor, that your hypothetical backyard neighbor.
Yeah.
So I, I don't know if that one flies.
Okay.
But the other folks on the board, if you could offer some wisdom from your past experiences to see if we can make this work for Susan or not.
Well, it, if she needs a deck for privacy, it obviously can't be where the deck already exists, and then it can't be on the front of the house, it can't, I can't imagine that it would be on the other side of the house, so, um, and again, it's because there's something special about the land.
Oh, that there's people tramping back and forth.
That invites, um, people to walk through there, um.
From the access point is right next to our house.
You know, if she was surrounded by quicksand, you wouldn't have people walking through there.
There you go. Brad, were you trying to say something?
Yeah, can you hear me yet?
Yeah, can you hear me yet?
Wow, yes.
I went on my phone. So to to do this and I made the mistake of upgrading my Zoom app on my computer.
Yeah, can be a problem.
So I I I missed a little bit of it, but I I do have a question about the actual. Hardship portion. Of this. So. If you're taking a an eleven by eleven deck, which is on the side of the house. To avoid people to get some privacy from people trespassing on your property. And you move it to the back of the house where it's proposed. That is actually moving it. Closer to the neighbor's deck. Which same side of the house. Or is is on, is the neighbors have it on the right side of their house. As looking at it from the from Paul Street and. I believe. The applicant is proposing to move it to the left side of the house.
No, I I'm proposing to put it off the back of the house.
Off the back, I'm sorry, but on the left side in the back. Which is where. So you're basically moving, proposing, moving a deck or putting a deck really close to the neighbor's house. So aren't you going to be running into the same hardship of privacy? That you're, that you're about with with. The random people that are that are trespassing on your property.
Well, my, this, this deck would be off the back of the house, not towards their house. Their deck comes towards me. So.
Correct. It's also on their back. So what I'm saying is the deck that you're putting up is going to be really. Close to their deck. Because you're. Close to your, to their property line.
Yeah. So really their their new deck is to the side of my house. So. Are the backs of our houses how they line up? If you're on my proposed deck, you'd have to turn around. To to see their deck. Because the backs of our houses kind of line up.
So the 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 property. What what I saw of the the plot of the of your butter. To your, to your left is it goes back. Six feet from the back of their house. But it goes out about twenty, about another fourteen feet towards the back of the house. And it looks like your houses are pretty well lined up because I I I've been out there and I've seen your houses. And it looks a like. Your decks, your, the backs of your house, pretty much in the same spot.
If they built a a deck out the back, yes, that the that the decks would be parallel.
Right. So so what I'm saying is you're not, you're not gaining any privacy. By by putting a deck in the back, at least you're not getting gaining any privacy from your neighbors. In fact, your neighbors will now have less privacy because of your deck. Being there, whereas your, as your deck was on the other side of the house. Was on the opposite side and it was not in the back at all.
But my deck also will be up, up elevated. So our decks are not on the same level.
One to the other there, both of the, both of the decks, both of the properties topography falls back down. Towards it. I mean, yours. On a, you may have a greater. You know, grade than that, but you're still walking the first floor. Onto your deck. And and you're walking out of their first floor under their deck. And they're fairly close to being at the same height as as I recall from what I had seen. When I, when I went by and and visited the properties.
And where are they tonight?
They had, they had showed no opposition. I I haven't heard seven, seven Palmer. Did not send in any.
So I I had, I had a quick thing and. And Julia, you might be able to answer this, you know, to Brad's. Question or or statement of privacy of the neighbor. You had mentioned the distance between. One home and the other, I think you said was about fifty feet.
Yep.
Now, taking that the other neighbor's deck, not this one we're talking about, but the other and. I I don't know, I didn't drive by to take a look at it, but. So is that coming away from their building? Toward. This property we're discussing tonight. So that makes them. What forty feet away roughly from this property?
Yeah.
If I was sitting on this deck and I was going to run a ruler over to the next door neighbor's deck and get to their railing. Would that be about forty feet maybe?
Think it would be, would you mind if I shared my screen, Paul?
Yeah, go ahead.
I have the map pulled up. That way we can all. I'm a visual person, so I like and you know, I love, I love a good map. So.
I see a black screen. Oh, there we go.
There it is. Yeah.
Everyone see it?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I can, I can.
Where this blue dot is, is five Paul Road. The shading is a little difficult in this image, just because we're getting some shadows. But the current deck is over here. And where she is proposing to build it is back here. And again, it's it's kind of hard to tell just because of the angle of the that the ortho was taken. But it's, so we're, we're looking right about here. If you look at seven Paul Road. That's this property here. Now they have their deck is this area right here. And they also are, they they have a screen. Between the property. So it it there's a a additional piece that goes on the side of the deck that comes up to provide. Screening, which a lot of these other houses. Actually, theirs is kind of back and I think theirs wraps around. There's in the back. So there's a few of them that have have kind of both side and back. But we go back to this one. They also have a privacy fence. So I'm pretty sure that's a vinyl. A six foot vinyl fence that runs. Not necessarily on their property line, but you know, runs a few feet in. And then if we are looking at. Measuring with my rough measuring tape. So this is approximately where her house is. This is approximately. Their deck. It's about thirty four feet. Plus or minus ten. Just based on angles of cameras.
And if you put where her new deck would be.
Yep.
That's, that's on the diagonal now and that's even further away.
Yeah. So that would be.
Back in there somewhere.
Approximately over here.
That's what I was thinking about forty feet roughly and and they have a privacy screen on their, on on the other neighbor's deck. So that.
But. Screen runs is on the ground. And and everybody's foundation is above where these decks are, are six or eight feet above the ground.
Right. But I think Julia said that they have a privacy fence, but they're also on the deck have a privacy screen.
I know that. Further downwards, the screen porch, further down. To towards down, but I I I. I I saw the properties.
Yeah, okay.
And typically the the privacy fence that goes between them, my six foot high fences on ground. And it does nothing. Or give you privacy. That particular fence gives you no privacy. From from deck and the proposed deck. That would be there. You'd be able to look because those decks would be. Above the privacy fence or, you know, at level.
We could require privacy screening as part of the.
I was just gonna say, could we require that? That is an option. I mean, I live in a condo and most of the condos in this complex of seventy five. Have privacy screens. I don't because I'm an end unit. But all the other units have a privacy screen on one side of their of their deck. So that, you know, one can't see to the other.
Purpose of a privacy fence here? What would that accomplish? For whom?
Well, if if she had a privacy screen on her deck, then. The neighbors wouldn't see each other when they're out on the deck.
But that the the issue is she wanted privacy from the side yard deck.
She could have it on both sides.
Well, she she put it up on the side yard deck, which is, which is what she is claiming that her hardship is to get. Oh, I'm, but my point or what my question is. Is. Something which is going to continue to. Is not going to give her relief from privacy by moving a deck into the. As it will create another privacy issue.
But if the privacy issue is because of all the people wandering through her yard to get to the backyard area. And she's moved her private, her 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 deck away from that side of the building where the people are walking. And moving it to the back of the house, she's accomplished her privacy.
Really? Because she's moved, basically the deck will take up half the house. Or she's just moved it twenty feet away.
Around around the corner of the house where the people are walking on like the front and the diagonal corner to get to that trail.
Of the people, oh, that's not correct. To get to the trail, they don't even need to go on her property. What they're doing is they're walking down. The the length of the property line, a hundred foot. Property line to access the back. Of the private land, which is in the back. Which is. And everything like that. If you looked at the where the trail starts is the trail starts at a ninety degree angle. It it actually, the trail. Starts much closer to number three Paul Road. And it goes up the hill and the official trail. Hill and it it circles around the top of the trail and comes back down. There is. Conservation apps. Of the trails that we have for Manor is the trails, there is no trail that runs. Property line.
So that's, I will say, so those those trail maps are from two thousand nine and very inaccurate. Based on. Based on, you know, what? All of the historical information that I have. The reason why. They, when they acquired that property was they, you know, took some of that that area on the side of the hill. Was to allow people to walk back and it actually does connect into the rest of the conservation land.
Back there.
Yeah. So it it loops around and connects up. So you can walk up up the hill or you can walk straight. And there is a portion of. Now eighteen Dana before you get to another conservation parcel.
Oh, you're saying they're.
Yep. So there's, there's like a full trail network in there that the one that.
Public street. To to get to, to get to the other conservation. Because I've. And I'm looking at, don't show anything. This is a standalone. Map, number one. Creation of the Rockland area map, number one.
Yep. So so that's the one from two thousand nine.
Okay, so. Okay. So anyway, that so that the town acquired that land in nineteen seventy two? Or seventy seven, something like that? And it and it's been there. Around the same time that the house was built. Is when that that end was acquired. So I don't understand where suddenly. So many years later, we have a, an issue of. Where people are using the trail. I mean, maybe it had been official trail by then, but if the the trail. Of the conservation clearly marked with sign from the town. Town conservation is toward trail. And so if people are walking. Around it to get to. Trail on another part of the house. You know, that's that, that may be fine, but I don't know if that's official. And what I'm saying is I think that's that the that perhaps there's a trespass. That's going on. There certainly are if they're, if they're walking through. The private lands. I'm not necessarily saying it's trespassing. What I'm saying is people are walking through. Private land to access. The conservation.
I mean, it sounds almost like that's a. Certain circumstance relating to the topography of the site where it's.
Do you mind if I share my screen again?
That'd be helpful.
Yeah. So let me just pull up. If this is from twenty nineteen, I. I was trying to pull up my images that I had from my site visit, but. I'm having having difficulties connecting to my work server. So we're just gonna have to go with Google Street View for a second. We can look at this together. Okay. Now let me know when you can see.
Hey, that's the same image I pulled up. Very good.
Awesome. Okay. So so this utility pole is about. And Susan, correct me if I'm wrong. I'm pretty sure when you actually did your survey, that was one of, one of the survey points. It's about the property line. Yeah. So when, when she had her survey out, that was something that they were looking at. So as you can see here. The the trail is it's on this side of the utility pole. So people would walk, come walk down and they'd walk this way. Now. The area is, sorry, one second. The area is. It's overgrown and Susan actually does keep that up. She she's, she's doing some landscaping for the town. Which I I appreciate. She she keeps that looking nice on this side. But because of, I mean, it's obviously not her responsibility to keep all of that pushed back because you just get overgrowth, particularly in the summer. People kind of stop to start walking around, but this is. Anything from the utility pole onward is, you know, it's a straight shot back. It is actually conservation land. But where, you know. People need to navigate. And there is no markings on the ground of where that line is. Where her property ends and starts. They're unaware of.
What that sign is underneath the twenty mile an hour. Children's sign, what that one says.
Yes, that's the conservation land.
Does it say?
That is our, all of our town rules and regulations for conservation land.
It doesn't say that that. That's right there.
Yeah.
Nope, it's a conservation land sign. Yeah, we don't have trail markers right now on any of our trails. We just have these signs that are used.
It well, it it marks where the for the conservation land is, but but if you go. Find where the trail is to write that.
Yep.
And where there's third markings of. Where the trail is.
So there's two trails. So there's this one, which is an entrance. And then over here, there's another one that that goes, that one goes up. So you can now meander up through and get to the top of the rock.
And I could say those are the official entrance, but there's a lot of nonofficial entrances.
Yeah.
A lot of folks coming from the Reeves side.
Yes, there's actually another entrance on that side as well.
Who? There's two.
Yeah.
And that tree right there, behind that tree is another conservation marker. That I was saying it was obscured when I mentioned it earlier. In the meeting.
You can just barely make it out in the middle of the screen there.
Yeah, I know.
So this is, it says conservation land.
That's it, yeah.
That says town of Maynard, you know, whatever. Everybody knows that this is where the trail is that goes up the hill.
So the the point, if we could reel this in a little bit. Putting the deck behind the house removes it from close proximity to the people walking down along the side of her property. That's the privacy issue.
It 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 gains, it it gains her twenty feet. Of privacy. Twenty five feet of privacy from her other deck.
And elevation. Because the side deck is closer to the ground.
It is, but the back of the side deck, yeah, it it is, it is a little bit. Yes, I I have to agree with that. Yeah.
Great.
And the and the other, just a quick one, if the other two, if if she wanted, she could put a privacy screen on her new deck, her new rear deck. On the side where the trail is. And then she'd never see the people going down, walking down to the trail. I mean, that's a. Granted, she could see her neighbors, you know, but I don't know that you have a problem seeing your neighbor, nor your neighbor has a problem seeing you. I think you're trying to avoid seeing John Q. Public going back and forth to conservation land. So that's, that's a way you could defeat that is to throw a privacy screen. So that's, that's a way you could defeat that is to throw a privacy screen on your own new deck if you wanted to.
Take the old deck down or are you gonna just leave that and, and use it for? For, for days where you don't care whether you have privacy or not?
Yeah, I'm just gonna leave it because it's concrete and steel. And so demolishing it is a serious big job. So that's just gonna stay where it is for now.
All right. So does, do the board members have enough information to make comment on the first criteria?
Well, I. I think, as I've said before, that since. Uh, there is that trail along the side of her property that's only there because of the. Um. Topography of that area that caused it to become conservation land. Uh, that the topography issue is covered.
Excellent.
Hey, I, I disagree. I, I don't think that the topography affects the. Self or the need to have a deck. So I think that the topography of the conservation land is an issue. But not the topography of the land where she's building the deck. Why she needs to, why she needs to build a deck is not because of the topography of her land.
Well, that, that's an interesting counter argument because in reading the criteria item, it says especially affecting such land or structures, but not affecting. The zoning district in which it's located. And if you have a trail running along the side of your property, I would say that affects that property more than the others in that area. So.
I agree.
Do we have, uh, a consensus? Do we want to close the public comment period and, and. Assume we've got all the information we need from the petitioner and her neighbor to go into our discussion period? Are we set for that?
An emotion?
Yeah. Leslie, you're good at motions.
Uh, I make a motion to close the public discussion portion of our meeting.
Now, do I get a second? Lots of seconds. Jerry, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we've got the five votes needed. And so now I guess we deliberate. Do we have, um. Items to discuss here? Or I, I get the, the impression that we're in generally in favor of this. And so if that's the case. I think I heard the item for number one. Um, item two, what do we have? Which is, uh, literal enforcement would involve hardship, financial or otherwise. Can we agree with that?
Yes.
And that is the privacy?
Yes.
Okay. And item three, relief without substantial detriment to the public good. And without modifying the zoning. Derogating the, the zoning bylaws. Do we have that?
I would say so because the lot in back is unbuildable. So it's, she's not encroaching on. Um, a neighbor that would be. She would be building closer to.
Another, another interesting argument I heard back on item two. On the hardship thing, if all the other properties on that street have decks. Not having a deck is a, is a financial degradation or hardship. If and when she decides to sell out and move on to something else.
This way?
Yes, Brad.
Um. She has a deck already. And in terms of, in, in terms of the financial hardship by a deck, a deck is, um, assessed by the square footage of a deck and it doesn't. Matter where the deck is. It has a deck, though she's not getting the financial hardship from not having a deck in the back. Um, but I do, I do think that it is privately owned property in the back. And somebody owns it. And it's yet to be made a determination whether they are buildable lots or, or not. But I think that people should be to expect that. Property that they own in a town, especially since they've owned it since 1949. That, um, they should be, um. Confident that the town would follow the town bylaws and not. And not make exception. Um, without them being able to, to be here. And I'm not sure that. Um, that the, the people who own that property. Um, were delivered the notice of. Um, that there was a, a meeting about it.
That, that should have been part of the, the package that the town planner sent out, right, Julia?
So, um, I'll give you a little bit more background on some of the legal stuff that's going on with this property. Um, if there was a tax lien, uh, the town tried to take it after many years of no taxes being paid in 1986. Um, when you go to do a taking with, um, because of no taxes, um, you put it, the lien on the property. And then you have to wait six months before you go to land court for the town to actually take it. They put the lien on the property. That was in 1986. They were brought back to court. So what we're trying to figure out now, um. So it's, it's kind of in, in property purgatory. Um. The town somewhat owns it, but not fully like the, you know, the teeth haven't been crossed type of thing. Um, there has been no taxes paid since pretty like it was, it's early eighties. Um, that the taxes stopped being paid, um, for them to, to, you know, start the process of, of acquiring the property, um, in the late eighties. And so what we're trying to do now is put those pieces back together, um. To go through, um, and on the, on, uh, on the buildable lot, um, you know, it, it's. It's almost 90% lot lens. Um, I, I don't see. Myself or my commission, um, on the conservation side ever allowing that to be filled, um, and built. Um, and our zoning enforcement officer, Rick Asman, did decide that this was an unbuildable lot from a zoning perspective as well.
And so I think to Brad's question. When the notices went out, did the supposed owners get a notice or is it still what you're saying town land?
So, so the, because they're not technically owners of the property, um, the. The list, the address listed that we have based on, you know, the assessing data is the town.
Okay.
So we, we sent it to, um. Ourselves.
All right. So.
Cause they don't have legal authority over, over that property anymore.
Okay.
But they could sell it still if they pay the backs taxes.
I don't know. I'm not sure about that.
All right. Well.
Go away.
I need a vote.
Sure. Leslie, you want to, you want to, uh, phrase a vote for us to mull over?
Oh, let me get up off the floor and see if I can. Um. All right. I make a motion to grant the variance to allow construction of a deck at five Paul Road. That will encroach 10.6 feet into the required 30 foot rear yard setback. Um. And, uh, in terms of, uh, the necessary findings, I, um, say that the. Unique property of the land behind it, therefore inviting. Um, people to walk along it, um. Is cause for, um. Considering that, that this, we should be allowed, uh, that the literal enforcement of it would, um, be a hardship in that. Um, it would, uh, prevent. Susan from having privacy. And, um, I believe that it does not derogate from the intent of the bylaw since the property behind it is not likely ever to be built upon.
Do I get a second?
Mr. Chair, can we amend that motion to include the condition about the construction vehicles?
Sure.
Okay. And, uh. To amend that, um, any construction vehicles involved in the project should be parked on the owner's property.
Okay. If we've captured all of that, do I get a second?
Second.
All right. You gotta be faster, Paige.
I know. You're too fast for me, Jerry.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
And so, uh. We could do a roll call or we could do a visual and it looks like everybody here who is voting has a visual. So all in favor of this. One, two, three, four. We got five hands up. So that's unanimous.
Six.
Hey.
Thank you.
We, we didn't hear that, Brad, but I think that's okay. I don't know. So seeing nothing else on our agenda. Uh, one last thing, uh, and this is where I'll put Julia on the spot. Could you explain to the petitioner the timeline from this point forward? Just so that she understands what's going to, or should happen.
Yes. So Susan, um, we can, we can go over the, see greater detail, um, if you want to come into the office, but I think we talked about. Basically next, um, we will write up your, uh, decision, notice of decision. Um, you'll get that as well as all of your neighbors will get. Uh, and noticing a decision has been made. Um, then there is an appeal period. Which in conservation is different. So I, I think in, in zoning. It's 20 days if I'm. Correct. Um, so nothing can happen, uh, construction cannot start until that appeal period is done. You'll get a certificate of no appeal. Um, and at that point you will go, um. Get this variance registered at the registry of deeds. Once you get that registered, then you bring that in, or actually it's online now. When you apply for your building permit, you attach, um. The variance as registered at the registry of deeds. That's how we know it's on your property. And then, uh, you're able to move forward. So I'm not sure if you will be doing that this season or waiting until next construction season, since we are approaching. Frost, but, um, we will make sure, I mean, you can always start that building permit now, um, and we can go over the details, um, in the spring as well.
Great. Thank you guys.
Thank, thank you, Jane, for your comments.
Oh, no problem. No problem. I learned a lot.
Yeah. As we do on every case.
Yeah, I, I bet. I bet you do. Thank you, Paul.
Sure. So our next item on the agenda is a very important one. Do I get a vote or a motion first? Yes, Jerry?
I was just gonna, I was gonna say so moved, you went for adjournment, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
So do I get a second?
Second.
Leslie, second. All in favor? Jerry. So the meeting's over. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good, interesting meeting tonight.
Yeah.
Thank you for your discussion. It was really interesting. It's always good to learn.
Never know which route we're gonna go down and where we're gonna come out.
I know, right?
And, uh, hopefully I can get you all, um, I'll talk to Bill about those minutes and, and, uh, your next meeting. Is December. Did, did he change your, your next meeting at all?
I don't know.
It is.
Okay. I don't think he has yet.
I don't remember.
We were, we've all been changing meetings just because of holidays. There's Christmas and Hanukkah, Thanksgiving and just lots of things happening. So, um.
Looks like we're set for the 19th.
For the 19th. Okay. Um.
Yeah. Yeah, the 19th on 18 Garfield Street.
Okay. So then you will have that one.
All right.
I'll talk to everyone later.
And maybe I'll have Paige, maybe I'll have Paige run that meeting.
Yeah.
As long as I have a heads up. Sounds good.
Thanks a lot, everybody.
Thank you.